All right. I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The, this meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.237082 and under the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through the Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Next will be the approval of the closed session agenda. Motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. For those at home, Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, Ms. Ralston's not here. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote? She voted? She voted yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passes. Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific employees and to evaluate the performance of the obudsmen under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 and. Two, to receive a confidential report from the obudsmen under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A17 and 8. And three, to consult with Division Council and staff regarding specific personnel and student legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice and actual or probable litigation under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A127 and 8. And four, to receive information and discuss with Division Council the payment of legal fees and costs for specific legal matters and actual or probable litigation requiring the advice of Council under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A78. And, and five, to receive information and discuss with staff and legal counsel the acquisition of real property for school sites where in discussions, where in discussions in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board and which matters require the provision of legal advice under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A3 and 8. And six, to discuss the performance and evaluation of the Division Superintendent in order to establish mutually agreed upon annual performance goals for the 2020-2021 school year as provided by Regulation 211-1, evaluation of the Superintendent under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1. And seven, to dispense with the attendance of the Superintendent under VA Code 222 dot 1 dash 69 as needed.
Outstanding, Ms. Williams. Do we have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? As seeing there's no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, she's.
Seven yes, one absent.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passes. We will now enter closed session and return in approximately one hour. Thank you. Welcome back to open session all. We are returning to open session now, and we have a number of action items. If the board members would refresh by hitting F5, you will see 8.01, 02, 03, and 04. And then we will take those. We have to do them one by one, Ms. McGowan? Okay, great, fine, okay. A motion is in order on the closed session, action item 8.01. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wall. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I ask board members to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, one absent.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, and the motion passes. Moving on to motion, action item 8.02. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the performance evaluation and 2020-21 school year annual goals of the obudsmen as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, one absent. Motion passed.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passes. Moving on to 8.03. Miss, motions in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the payment of legal bills for outside council as presented in closed session and authorized by VA Code 222 dot 1 dash 82.
Do I have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I would ask the board members to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, one absent. Motion passed.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion, seven yes, one absent. Motion passes. Moving on to 8.04. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the Superintendent's annual goals for the 2020-21 school year as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I ask the board members to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, one absent. Motion passed.
The motion is seven yes, one absent. Motion passes. And just for everyone at home, Ms. Ralston was unable to attend this evening for personal reasons, and so that is why you're hearing the one absent. Moving on to closed session certification, 9.01. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of September 2, 2020 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed session meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I would ask the board to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, one absent.
The vote, the motion passes, seven, zero, one absent. Okay. Thank you for all of that. I would like to call now the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of the meeting, the meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. We have tonight Caroline Silva, who is our school board rep, attending her first meeting of the school year. She is a rising senior at Hilton High School. She will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is right there.
Start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Next, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. 12.01. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I would ask the board members to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Great. Do I have to repeat that? Okay. I'm gonna, because you spoke into the mic, everyone can hear that. Again, I'll just say the motion passed. Next, to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, I would ask the board members to please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
And that voice that you're hearing, for those at home, is B. Simpson, our new clerk of the Prince William County School Board. And so we'd like to congratulate Ms. Simpson on her first meeting as the clerk of the Prince William County School Board and doing a fantastic job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we will be moving on to citizen comments. And I will, I will read this. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means unlike other public bodies meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussions at this meeting by board members, staff, citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes. When the board is able to resume regular meetings without the virtual participation permitted during the state of emergency, expanded citizen comment time will be, will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the school board clerk via email no later than 4:00 PM Wednesday, September 2, 2020, may address the school board in person or virtually on agenda items. There is one speaker signed up to speak here in person and two have signed up to speak virtually. Jason, would you like to do the virtual ones first?
Yes, Chairman. Let's see if we can do the virtual one, because only one of the two are actually in the queue.
Okay, so we'll do the virtual one, and if the second one shows up after the live in person, we'll come back to that. So you just let us know. Go ahead, Mr. Stevens. I'll let you take care.
Rebecca Anderson, Rebecca Anderson. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Anderson, and I would like to speak on just two things this evening. Over the past few weeks, I have expressed concerns via email about students' inability to change their names in a Zoom meeting. I understand why this setting was originally made, so that students don't change their names to something like Stinky Mitt Barts in the middle of live instruction. I also greatly appreciate that in the return to Learn Packet today, parents were given directions for how to update their child's preferred name using ParentView, but I still have a few concerns. What if there is a transgender student whose parent refuses to use their correct pronouns and name? Is there a way for a student to discreetly handle this without having to do so during class on the first day of a school? What if there is a student who does not wish to use their, display their legal last name? Can a student handle this without having a parent intervene on their behalf? What if there is a registered sex offender living in a house where a student is accessing their live instruction? Should we even be displaying student names at all? Two, as we get closer to our first day of school, we see an increasing spike in COVID-19 cases in school systems that are open before us. I am concerned that having more than 1,600 students plus the corresponding educators and staff in the buildings will result in even more hotspots in our county and at worst will result in dead teachers and students. While teachers of our most educationally vulnerable students are in person, they are also expected to teach a group of students virtually. Why are we bringing students into the building if we aren't able to fully serve them? The in-person teachers have been through the N95 FIT test, which involved wearing a mask and having a bitter liquid sprayed at them. If they tasted the liquid, they failed the FIT test. Even teachers who failed the test are expected to teach in person on Tuesday. For the education and safety of all students and educators, I urge you to move to 100% virtual start and reevaluate best practices for student names on Zoom. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Stevens?
Chair, let's see, that's all I have on my side.
Okay, great. And I think the person we have here speaking this evening, well, I'll call Maggie Hansford.
I'm gonna take off my mask since I'm the only speaker. Welcome, Bee. She's been very kind to me today. All right. Good evening, Chair Latif and school board members. My name is Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file. I'm coming to you as the PWA president with my ongoing concerns with the Division's return to school plan. I want to share the past three weeks, PWA has helped supply members with technology needed for their virtual classrooms. We've supplied keyboards, monitors, printers, and other useful technology for our members. I hear from members daily about the concerns regarding inadequate PPE, excessive workloads, and how site-based management is causing safety inequities across the district. I have been copied on many of the emails you all have received, so I know that you all are aware of these issues. No educator was given a choice to virtually teach or teach in person. Educators were asked to fill out a disability form, and with that, the Division determined if the employee was provided the accommodation of virtual teaching. Many members are reporting to have to do both virtual and in person, and we all know our special education staff has been tasked to complete a year's worth of work in three weeks. To address our members' concerns, I ask the board to encourage our superintendent to work closely with PWA throughout the school year. I have not met with Dr. Walt since July. At that time, he agreed an August meeting, but that meeting never occurred. His staff recently reached out to me about a bi-monthly meeting, but the first meeting offered would take place at the end of September after school, the, the school year had already begun and far too late to make any meaningful changes. I am disappointed that he doesn't see PWA as a valued stakeholder in our county's educational system. PWA represents thousands of employees, and his refusal to work with leadership is a refusal to give these employees a voice. I thank board members who have continued to meet with me and meet with our members as we navigate the beginning of this extraordinary year. PWA remains confident in our members and committed, and we are committed to the ability that, to provide a high-quality education for every child in Prince William County. We look forward to working closely with our board and division to ensure this year is safe, equitable, and accessible as possible. Thank you, and I want to give a shout out to Ms. Humner for being here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hansford. That will be the end of citizen comment time. Correct, Bee? No further, okay. Next, we'll move to 15.01, legislative priorities. Mr. Guilfoyle? Or Dr. Waltz, rather. Dr. Waltz, would you like to introduce our legislative priorities?
We can go right to Mr. Guilfoyle, please.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Latif and school board members. If I could ask for the presentation to please be brought up. Thank you. We can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. So this evening, I'm also joined by Mr. Jim Council, our representative in Richmond. He is here with me. He's joining us from Richmond, and he'll be here as well to help me present this. So as it may seem amazing that we're already in September and we're already thinking about January, but what we're talking about this evening are our, your school board priorities for the January session of the General Assembly. Of course, there is a special session of the assembly going on right now as we speak. But this evening, I'm here to address the board's priorities for the January session. I'm not going to go through these in great detail, as they have been provided to you in writing a couple of times on the summer, and they are on board docs in detail for your review as well. This evening, they're presented to you, and then next week, they will be placed on the consent agenda for your approval so that we can move forward with preparing these. You've likely recognized many of these. They are very, very similar to last year, our top 10 areas of focus, and thematically, they really come down to a couple of different things. One is enhanced funding flexibilities for our school division as well as funding generally. Of course, we were on a great track in January to meet many of these goals, and then, of course, COVID hit and derailed a lot of these priorities that we had had great traction with our delegation with here locally and in Richmond. So we'll continue to focus on those again this coming January. We also have a number of priorities focused on increased flexibility for multiple pathways for students beyond the college pathway, allowing additional flexibilities for our students in terms of their needs as well as the accreditation standards and ensuring that those are equitable for all schools. So if you could please advance to the next slide. As is our tradition, every year, we also have a number of other areas where we have statements of support or opposition of the school board. Here are the main areas of focus. Again, very high level, and just some of the highlights in each of those areas. The full in-depth are on board docs if you want to read them in detail. Again, one of the areas are conduct and discipline, which is again about local flexibility and ensuring that our school administrators have the flexibilities necessary. Opposing unfunded mandates is always a big challenge in terms of the things that come out of Richmond and ensuring that even the best idea, that making sure that those are funded. We also want to continue to look at increased funding for our teachers and supporting them, especially in their professional development. Of course, this year, we don't know where we'll be in January, and we continue to have challenges related to COVID-19, and that is beyond funding. It's also things like statutory requirements that require certain things be done in person. So we're asking that we support all bills that provide relief to statutory requirements such as that. And then additionally, we continue to need instructional technology support. As we all know, given COVID, where we are right now, we need additional state support to ensure that every household has equal access to broadband or wireless access, and we really need that to be a statewide initiative. And then, of course, supporting the Virginia Star program, which Prince William County administers on behalf of the entire state, and we continue to do so. The other areas are on school board governance and then assuring that the school board has the authority, local authority, that it needs to operate. And then lastly was one that we added last year, which is around supporting bills that contribute to the school division's efforts to conserve energy and natural resources. So those are, in a nutshell, real quick, the, the high-level areas of additional areas of support and oppositions. If we could please advance to the next slide. So the next steps after the board approves these is that we will, as we traditionally do, share these with the Board of County Supervisors. We then produce our legislative priorities publication that we use when we do visits, and this year, we may or may not be able to do in-person visits, but we'll work with Mr. Council to set up virtual visits if we need to. And Mr. Council continues even now during this session to work with our delegates on those key issues and make sure they're informed of the information that they need. And as again, Mr. Council is here with us this evening, and so can advance to the next So that's just in a nutshell, is our legislative priorities for present, presentation for this evening. So thank you, Dr. Latif.
Mr. Stevens, can you put everyone's pictures back up so I can see them? Is there any questions here by folks on the dais? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Guilfoyle. That's one of my favorite times of year. I just have a question for Mr. Council. If, if there's anything that the board should be updated with the current session and, and expectation of the session in January? You don't have to provide us that information now, but if we could get a summary, I think that would be great, considering we have a mixed board of old and new board members, so that we could kind of be a little bit more prepared for January or be thinking about that in the timeframe of January. And I'm asking because I know that this is an unusual year, and we probably won't hear from you until we get close to January, but you are inside scoop, so, and you do a fantastic job, I'm added, of representing us down in Richmond. I'm very appreciative of your service, sir.
Yes, Ms. Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, Dr. Latif, let me say, I regret that I'm not there physically tonight. I planned to be, but I played tennis last Wednesday with someone who later tested positive, so I'm entertaining myself for two weeks and spending a lot of time on, on legislation. But I have no symptoms, so all things are good at this point.
Excellent.
If you, if you like, Ms. Williams, I, I would like to give you maybe a two-minute update on the things we are most concentrating on in Richmond right now.
I would love that, sir. I'm always a fan of hearing what's going on in Richmond.
Yeah. In addition to the normal bills that are on my summary, if you have had a chance to see that, and I'll note that about 20 or 25 bills in education, this special session, and things I would describe as chaotic in Richmond at the moment. Just for example, with some 25 bills, House Ed has not even met yet, and it seems like the only group moving any legislation is Senate Ed and Senate Finance. The two big things we lobbyists together have been concentrating on is, number one, a cross-the-board decrease in ADM, and we had hoped to get something through that would hold the school divisions harmless on that, but unfortunately, a bill to that effect was defeated in Senate Finance today, so the outlook is not good. But even more dollars involved. While we understood that K-12 would be untouched in the special session, the governor has a budget amendment in that would adjust the sales taxes that school divisions share in by about $189 million over the biennium. And that would represent across the board 95.2 million to school divisions for the current year, which translates to about 5.5 million to Prince William schools. So we are very much concentrating on trying to get that money restored. There is about $490 million of unappropriated funding just sitting there, and that's what we're trying to target. All the lobbyists from the school divisions are working hard on that, and this is an issue where we've been able to really work closely with the VEA lobbyist, who has spent a lot of time with the speak on it, and I've spent a lot of time talking with both, both Delegatorians' office and also the House Appropriations staff person for education. So I'm not saying yet, I'm optimistic we can get that current year 95.2 million restored, but I will let you know that we're primarily concentrating on that and working hard on it at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Council. One follow-up question. Do you have any update on Delegate Rome's school lunch funding? I know that was in a committee, I think appropriations.
Again, House Education did not meet at all. That bill was referred to House Appropriations, and it was voted out of Appropriations, I think unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Council. I look forward to further updates.
I will tell you that I've been advised by Prince William's staff that that will probably cost Prince William maybe one and a half million dollars a year, but I've taken no position on the bill.
Thank you again. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Outstanding. Mr. Council, thank you for everything you do down there. Mr. Guilfoyle, look forward to working with you all this fall. Mr. Council, I have a quick question. Are there any indications about what next year's budget's going to look like at the state level?
Except for what I mentioned about the sales tax, I don't get any real indications of how the second year of the biennium, as it relates to K-12, will be impacted. You know, I think everybody's taken a close look and actually hoping that even the sales tax picture will improve. And in addition, by the way, to the 490-some million that's sitting there unfunded, there's about 90 million in the, what was it, the gray machine? The slots machine money that is donated or dedicated to COVID and could be used The the slots machine money that is donated or dedicated to COVID and could be used in education. And then the governor has, I think, left about $1 billion in care money that he can use at his discretion. But beyond that, Dr. Latif, I don't have any real insight on what else may change for the second year of the biennium.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and please keep us up to date on where we are on that.
Yes, sir.
Matt, anything further to add?
No, I'll be working with you, Mr. Chairman, on the logistics of our joint meeting that we hold typically with the County Board of Supervisors. We usually do that the week around Thanksgiving, and I'll work with you on the logistics of that shortly.
Okay. I think we should feed them well this time. They've been kind this summer. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guilfoyle. Okay. Great. We're going to move on to 16.01, which is the proposed sale of VPSA bonds, fall of 2020. Mr. Wallingford. Dr. Walts, do you have any comments on this first, and then I'll let you turn it over?
Yes, it's good. We can go straight, straight to Mr.
Mr. Wallingford, are you with us?
Yes. Chairman Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. I'm presenting you with a resolution that we do every year. This item's for information, and it's the sale of debt that we will make in scheduled currently in October for just a little bit over 115 million dollars. And just a piece of good news, that's actually a reduction of about $6 million. It's associated to efficiency from our facilities folks in their construction efforts and some favorable bids. So that number's down by $6 million. Thank you.
Mr. Wallingford, last year's sale of bonds brought in a record interest rate, a record-low interest rate for us. What is your anticipation of this year's bond sale?
The markets are as good this year as they were last year. My expectation is that we'll have a true interest cost of sub 3%, which is historically an outstanding rate.
And then just, it may be a stupid question, but on past bond sales, can we? We can't refinance those, right? Those are all set.
No, Dr. Dr. Latif, that's not correct. We refund bonds on an annual basis. We refunded last year. We refunded the year before. This will be the first year in several years that we're looking at actually not doing any refundings. The analysis in order to issue those refundings is done by county staff and our financial advisors, who we both both work with. And it's looking right now like we won't have any of those this year.
Wonderful. Anybody else have any questions or concerns on the sale of bonds? And then next week, we'll be on for action, or do we vote on it? We don't really vote on it. It's just information.
No, this is just information this evening, sir.
Okay. Outstanding. I see no further discussion on this. We will move next to 17.01, Sustainability Initiative Status Update. Dr. Walts?
I will go right to Mr. Shiroki, please.
Mr. Shiroki, welcome. Take it from there.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. It is my pleasure tonight to bring you an update from our Energy Management Department on our path to sustainability. Earlier this summer, you as a board passed a resolution taking us to the next step in being able to really focus not only with new construction, but with our whole operations aspect and how we should embrace sustainability from operations to construction to the way that we do instructional methods within our schools. So it's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Mr. Brian Gorham, who is our coordinator for Energy Management, to provide you with an overview of each of the items within your resolution and the path and the possibilities that we have in moving forward this evening. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Gorham.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. I saw your picture. On June 10th, as Mr. Shiroki said, you issued the Sustainability Initiative outlining your strategy to improve the carbon footprint in Prince William County schools and reduce our dependency on fossil fuels. This important and broad-ranging set of goals will also enhance the performance of energy-consuming systems while increasing awareness and literacy for sustainability. You requested at that time an update with a timeline for deliverables within 90 days, and tonight I am happy to provide you with that update. Next slide, please, Jason. And the next slide, please, sir. Thank you. The goals you have outlined are important to the future of the school division. Developing a long-term strategy focused on resiliency and a steadfast determination to minimize our impact on the environment is critical to the health, safety, and success of not only this generation, but the many generations to follow. Next slide, please, Jason. Success will be earned through the development of a network of stakeholders engaging cooperatively to achieve the common goal for the common good. During the last 90 days, I've communicated with nearly all departments in Prince William County schools, from student learning to transportation, risk management, and beyond. Our staff are unified in their commitment to seeing to the success of this initiative. Next slide, please, Jason. And now we will step through each item in the initiative. Design and construction standards. Through various tools, we will develop the requested standards and options for the design of projects with net zero impact. A portion of the funds allocated to the initiative for consulting services will be used to evaluate a series of design standards consistent with other successful net zero projects while informing a strategy of balancing CIP funding. The next available opportunity to update our design with these newly implemented standards would be the Aquaquan Elementary School replacement scheduled to begin construction in 2023. Next slide, please. These design criteria that you see on the screen are an example of those that we will ask a third-party consultant to review against our current elementary school prototype so we may budget appropriately in the CIP. Next slide, please. Additionally, we feel it is very important to implement elements of these design standards into our existing buildings where possible. One of the greatest opportunities available in our existing infrastructure is performing lighting upgrades. Lighting accounts for about 30% of electrical consumption and expense. Replacement yields a 60% savings of that cost. The numbers shown in this slide reflect the scenario where all existing lights are replaced, you know, almost simultaneously, but in one project. It's more practical to think of this as a bigger project that might take multiple phases. However, there are significant savings as shown when done, and we believe in this project. Next slide, please. There's one before that. Okay. On your slide, Dex, you were offered a slide that has high-performance building design as well. We are excited to build on our existing foundation of LEED design standards, which have been a part of our construction design portfolio for many years. We'll incorporate feedback from the Advisory Council while balancing the needs and resources included in the CIP. We understand that it is critical that we not only enhance sustainability and net zero efforts, but that we do so in such a way that makes the process itself resilient and sustainable. Next slide, please. Power purchasing agreements are impactful tools to implement solar energy into the portfolio of Prince William County schools. This summer, we identified several different procurement options to participate in PPAs and anticipate some additional due diligence as we move toward developing our strategy. Next slide, please. Oh, there's the missing slide. So we'll jump back to that. As I said, that is a slide referencing our desire to build on our existing foundation of LEED. We are, as an example, pursuing LEED silver for Rosemount Lewis. Next slide, please. Our electric bus grant update. I'd like to thank you all for approving the easement for the charging station this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you to Ms. McGowan for all her hard work with Dominion Energy and actually making that happen. It's not an easy process. The grant opportunity awarded to PWCS for two electric buses and the charging station provides us a valuable opportunity to begin understanding not only the environmental impacts of this technology, but also the operational. So it's a great first step. It's a pilot and gets us in the door. Next slide, please. We have provided some background information per request of our 919 bus fleet and the implications of replacing that fleet with electric buses. We've provided you some background information, and as you can see, an electric bus costs nearly 300% more than a conventional diesel bus. We do, however, plan to continue to monitor this technology, taking advantage of additional grants when possible. And we see those coming, not necessarily in this legislative year. Hopefully, they earn a place in future legislative years. The curve of electric buses is similar to that of LED, and we do expect the cost to come down over time. Next slide, please. As directed, we have begun the process of developing the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. We ask that you begin, please, considering the candidates that you would nominate to participate in this committee. Our goal is to complete appointments in October. To highlight some major milestones in the coming year would be that by December, we would have the council come back to you and present goals and objectives. And then the first opportunity to begin including that output of this work group will be in our 2021-22 CIP season. Next slide, please. We have had preliminary discussions with our county counterparts. There's a strong desire to work together. They've got a lot of people that are very interested in cooperating and collaborating. So I see great opportunity. A lot of familiar names that are still on staff that we've worked with over the course of years, but we can definitely build on that collaboration, and I think there's a lot of value there. Next slide, please. As you are aware, the Office of Student Learning has been highly focused on the return to learning and the virtual educational environment for the new school year. However, Mr. Basset and I have been in communication. We both look forward to the collaboration resuming in the fall, probably about the mid-period of the first quarter. And we look forward to beginning to develop those resources and support the insurance that environmental literacy and project-based learning opportunities are established. Next slide, Jason. In addition to working with student learning, we have been working with the Office of Accountability on those initial steps of developing strategic goals. Need to be able to measure the success of those environmental literacy pieces and sustainability literacy pieces. So we'll be developing measurable standards for inclusion of sustainability into the strategic plan. Next slide, please. Sustainability study. Funding will be used to hire an independent, third-party sustainability consultant that can help organizational management and transparency to the Superintendent's Advisory Council. This resource will aid in developing work groups and will work to satisfy the varying requests of the initiative. Next slide, please. We definitely plan to work with schools and expand our recycling efforts and take additional measures to reduce waste. Next slide, please. Many of our waste reduction goals and our strategies initially and then ultimately will be to exceed the current statewide recycling efforts as a as a baseline and benchmark for us to strive toward. Next slide, please. Management of the initiative will change the organizational structure of the current Energy Management Division. The Energy Conservation Program has historically been focused on fiscal stewardship and energy resource conservation. Next slide, please. Evolving the existing team of Energy Management to add sustainability will create a multifaceted group capable of addressing the requirements of the initiative and maintaining the existing demands. As always, our goal will be to maintain transparency while setting the stage for success of the school division for years to come. And the last slide, please. Wanted to highlight some of the milestones we have on our pathway to sustainability. In this school year, we do, as explained, plan to establish the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. We will also implement strategy for initial PPA packages. In the coming year, we plan to be able to adopt standards for high-performance building design. We would like to create division-wide standards for environmental literacy in the 2021 and 22 school years. 2022 through 2023, as explained, we plan to consider construction alternatives for the first net zero school. I'm with you. Do it on the mic. 2050. We're setting a very lofty goal, but we are striving to align with the Commonwealth of Virginia goal for carbon neutrality. Thank you.
You guys did this in maybe less than 90 days. We can't thank you enough. I think the whole board, and I think the county understood this was probably one of the most, you know, aggressive energy agendas or initiatives that any council or county authority has ever sort of passed. And for you all to put this together. Dr. Walts, thank you for for having these guys in the midst of a pandemic. And I recognize, and as you pointed out at the end of our vote, this is going to be challenging in 90 days, but you delivered, I think, on time and under budget again with this.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. We've got great employees, and we certainly have a great team in our Energy Management. And again, I echo your sentiments. Fantastic job.
Yeah. We have a couple of questions from the board members, if you all don't mind. I'll start with Ms. Williams first.
Thank you. I want to echo the superintendent and chairman's comments. But I've been on the board for a little while, so I would like to know. I know that we already had a fantastic Energy Management program, to which I think we stole you from whoever was managing that or you came on board, or maybe you were already.
Yeah, locally architects.
Okay. Yes, so.
Long time ago.
Yes, a long, long time ago. So I know that you're fantastic in this area, and this is your area of expertise and have done a great job. I just want to know, like, when it comes to the LED replacements, we were sort of already doing that? Am I understanding that correctly within the division? Can you tell me a little bit more about the difference between what we're doing and what this initiative entails?
Sure. So we're currently doing it through our seven and 14 renovation program. Sorry. We're currently doing it through the seven and 14 renovation program. We haven't adopted it as a wholesale project that would otherwise pursue some mechanism for funding. There are options where private industry is willing to contribute, you know, to that funding, and they're called performance contracts. We've done them before. That could be the fastest mechanism to get us these savings, but we have not been able to just bite that whole thing off yet.
I appreciate that clarity because I didn't want someone to be like, they didn't do anything new. We've already, we're already doing that, but I knew there was more to it. So that's why I'm asking these questions. And then if you could, and when it comes to the literacy, I know that we had a literacy program when we were doing the energy conservation. Could you expand a little bit on? And I know you don't have every store, every single detail. I'm not asking that. But could you expand on sort of what we're doing now and in a little bit more detail of where we hope to go with that?
Yes. So we developed the Energy Challenge, which this year will be on Canvas. It'll be a tool available to all teachers through Canvas to do. It has historically, again, been focused on some of these project-based learning components that are more of the monetary savings, turning out the lights, being able to go through and audit a school. And it's been developed around that strategy. We'd like to broaden that strategy, but then with the contributions from CTE, from student learning, you know, make that more part of the curriculum in the day so that people have more exposure to that rather than just an opportunity for a small club or group in a school to participate. Make it much more broadly defined.
Thank you. As a former seventh-grade founding member of the Ecology Club at Lake Ridge Middle School, I'm really, no, I'm really, seriously, and I'm joking aside, I'm really, I'm really excited about this. And I'm really excited about you incorporating CTE in because I remember a few years ago, we had a student come from one of our Western End High Schools. I can't think of who it was. It may have been Unity Reed now, who did like a thermal imaging project that was.
We had the three ladies.
Right. It was fascinating. I also encourage you maybe to reach out because we are a part of the Governor's School, and every, they have their innovation project. So they may be a good resource, too. I'm just throwing that out there because some of the things they do within in conservation and energy management, sometimes the students come up with are amazing, and that's another way to continue to partner. And then my, I think that's it, other than to just say thank you. Oh, I had one more question. I knew what it was. So with the Dominion Pilot Bus Program, which I'm really excited about, that we were selected to participate in that, because if folks don't know, that's actually a tremendous honor to be able to participate. Everybody did not get to do that. Is there any hope in the future? And of course, I'm not holding you to this. This is like crystal ball question. And maybe this is what they do because I haven't read the grant. For charging stations, is is there any way that in the future, maybe, that we that we can consider like solar charging stations? Or is that something that Dominion's like, no, we give you the power and then no? I mean, I just, I don't know.
Sure.
So you don't have to answer that right now if you don't know either. But I just, as we're talking about that, I thought that might be interesting.
Well, it'll have a solar component to it that'll charge some batteries. And in turn, they actually want to be able to use that battery power during the summer, I think. But they do wish to expand the capacity of that over time. And so this pilot gives them the opportunity to review that data, see how much cost it'll take to actually do that and fully deploy that. I see that definitely in the near future.
Thank you. And again, congratulations for all of the hard work that all of you, Mr. Shiroki, your team and your team. I'm sorry, just like that, I forgot your name. I apologize. Pandemic brain, but I, I'm sorry. Mr. Gorman, thank you, Mr. Gorman. Just a little bit. But I can't applaud you enough for all the hard work and effort that you're putting into this and all the coordination, especially now that we had to transfer from being in-building to being online and then eventually we're going back in-building. So it's extra work, but I am extremely proud of our division and all the work that you've done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Facility Services is honored to participate.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you so much for your presentation. This is making me very happy. I do have a couple of questions about the electric buses.
Sure.
If you happen to know, you've got an average annual fuel cost for diesel is $7,000 per bus. Do you know what it costs to charge a, what it would, would it cost with the electric buses?
I don't know that yet.
Okay.
We, once we get this running and we'll be able to ascertain what it does and how many miles we can get on those charges. And I think we're developing a spreadsheet already. We're really excited, too.
No, we're so excited.
Trying to think, how can we input the numbers early? But we're almost there. December, we think we'll get our deliveries and begin to start that process.
I, can I get a ride on one of those? Like, when you get one, I want to, I want to get a ride on one of those buses.
Maybe we can have a school board meeting on the bus.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, absolutely. When these buses arrive, I know we'll be working with our Communications Department about a rollout as far as where the buses are going to be used, how they're going to be used. But we've had numerous schools inquire about how they could get a tour of the bus with their students. So we're going to be using this bus in between routes. I know taking it to schools to be able to demonstrate the effectiveness and efficiency to our students as well. So yes.
Then the last, oh, gosh, it just went out of my, oh, no. It's related to buses in a different way. You know, you talked a little bit about a partnership between the county government and schools. This is more toward the county government because they're the ones who build other stuff, but they also approve communities to be built. I really think we need to be looking at more sidewalks, more bike paths, more walking paths, things like that. I know a couple of the, the one, the Rosemont School, that was one that had a lot of really cool community connections. And I think, I think we need to be working more on those things as well because that's the ultimate green, isn't it?
Sure. And we had some, in our conversations with them this summer, they're still defining what their vision, I'm so sorry. They're still defining what their vision looks like for their sustainability initiative. And I think they spoke just to that point, you know, community walkability, watershed protection, environmental stewardship as a whole. So they are definitely working in that direction.
Ms. Jesse.
Hi. First of all, you know, I've been with this program for quite some time, and you guys have done a phenomenal job. And your, all the new initiatives. I'm very pleased to see the new initiatives that you have. The Advisory Council, I think that's a wonderful idea. And also the net zero because we've been receiving a lot of concern and parent groups that have come. And I've met with some of them to talk about this concept. An old item, I wanted to know, there was some type of compensation or recognition of schools who, whose energy use was commendable? Is that still in place?
Yes, ma'am. $1,800 a year for those schools that participate in that Energy Challenge. And again, this will be on Canvas this year so they can modify their program in any way. But we still will return that portion of savings to the school. And then there's a stipend for the teacher who is in charge.
Do we have any this year all?
Yes, we are up to, and it varies a little bit between 50 to 60 schools participate on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chenwol.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very, very interesting. I had a question just about the electric, the average electric bus cost.
Yes.
No, I think you said it, but the cost is quite high right now. But do you have an idea of how, I mean, has it been coming down? I mean, was, did it used to be more expensive and now it's coming down in cost? And is that something we'll just look at in the future when it becomes more economically feasible for us to do?
It's kind of a part A and part B. And I'll let Mr. Shiroki follow up with the part B. But the part A is that the technology's going to have to be widely accepted first by, you know, school divisions so that they can begin to manufacture on a high degree. So to that point, I think then there's a part.
Yeah, so that's the white elephant in the room. You know, when you see that, it was, I think, $360,000. So for us as a school division, to be purchasing those over a diesel, which is two-thirds less, that's a tough sell. So we definitely want to continue to take advantage of any subsidies. But just as the electric vehicles for the consumer market started at a very high price and you're seeing as more are being bought and technologies are changing, that price is coming down. Buses, the, the concept of the technology is very similar to the transit buses. It's still a unique technology. And obviously, the more school divisions nationally buy buses, that price. So we know that the price will probably not, we hope not go up incrementally, but it will start to go down. But it's a matter of when is that, when do you have that balance to where you start really embracing it? But right now, for us to continue after this pilot with two, we would have to have some form of subsidy because we couldn't not afford to buy the diesel buses that we have to have in order to provide transportation to our kids. So it's a delicate balance, but that's something that we'll all be watching.
Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Shiroki, just follow up on the bus question. Is there a reason we don't do natural gas with buses? I mean, a lot of counties, divisions, I mean, around the world, do natural gas with buses. Is that more, less expensive than the electric? More expensive than the diesel?
So it varies year to year. You know, the electric price is fairly steady, but gas prices fluctuate, just like we have natural gas in our home, propane. So it's one of those where you have to find a balance. But you also have to be able to make the investment of the infrastructure to be able to provide that gas. So at this point, we have found that using diesel with the high-efficiency diesel engines that we're currently purchasing, that that's been the best medium. And the electric vehicle is really the one for us to begin pursuing because it just makes sense. It's just cost is the biggest challenge right now.
Wonderful. Well, can you, I know, I don't know if you've done this, and Mr. Guilfoyle might be online still, but I think a press release on the electric buses and what you guys have done, if we haven't done one of those already, would be, do we do, yeah. Did we already do a press release on that with Dominion?
We have, but I know that we will be ramping up when we get the, the delivery date from the manufacturer because we're one of, we are going to want to make a big show of that.
Fantastic. And even on this whole presentation, I don't know if we're putting this up on the, it's all on the website, I assume, right? Just like all board documents. Okay, great. I'm going to go to, I think Ms. Jackson had her hand, and I'll go to Ms. Williams. Ms. Jackson, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, my, Ms. Williams asked my questions earlier. I just, I want to echo the importance of including students. And I'm very excited about this. Thank you for the presentation. And I'm excited to see what you have to present in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Williams, I think, had her hand up. And then I think that should be it.
Yeah, I was just going to take my turn and say, I of course want to be there when you do the delivery, when we get delivery of the electric buses since I so politely hounded all of you to try to get on board with this. I was watching the papers about it, so I'm very excited. But also, any recommendations as you are boots on the ground for appointments for councils? I think, ooh, excuse me, would be very helpful for us of the board. I know it's, we've had a small group of people who come, but if there are some experts that have come to your attention, I know that I would appreciate that information. And again, thank you for everything that you've been doing. This is very, very exciting.
Mr. Shiroki, yes.
Yeah, so just two final remarks. One, I would be remiss not to thank Brian and his entire energy team for the Herculean effort that they have done since this has passed. Not only are they getting ready as everyone else to return to learning, but they have been working day and night on this. But I will say this, our action item for you as a board, we talked about the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, and each of you will have the opportunity to nominate someone. We will be sending you communication on skill sets and interests that we believe are viable to have, so that we have a cohesive group that has strengths from all areas. So we'll be providing that to you. And our goal will be that we'll come back to you in October where you will be able to approve the folks that you have nominated for that. So that information will be forthcoming, and we will give you some ideas of where to go. But it's really open to anyone. It could be a student, it could be a faculty member, it could be somebody out in business and industry. It's wide open, but we'll give you that clarity. Thank you.
So Elon Musk will be on this committee then, right?
He doesn't, he doesn't pay taxes in our county. So I don't, we don't really want him. I'm just, I'm just joking. We'd love to have him pay taxes in this county, though. That would be great. Just, I'd be remiss to say, I can't thank you both enough and Dr. Walts for the enthusiasm you all have shown in your own departments and the excitement you've shown with the desire to really make this happen. The idea tonight that we announced a potential first school that would be net zero in 2022-23 is just incredible. And in whatever we as a board can do to, to make this work, we're, we're very excited to all work with you all. Thank you for, for your, your hard work this summer. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Wonderful. We will move next to 18.01. And this is an exciting time for, for us because, you know, jeez, oh, man, it's been a rough last six months, and it's just nice to have students back in any capacity. I would like to introduce our student representatives to you. We have two student representatives this year and one alternate. Joining us tonight from the, at the dais is Student Representative Caroline Silveira. Caroline is a senior attending Hilton High School. In the audience tonight, we also have our Student Representative Benjamin Kim. Ben is a senior at Unity Reed High School this year. And our alternate Student Representative Ashley Manjivar, a senior attending Woodbridge High School. The representatives will alternate, attending the school board meetings monthly. And, and we'll be providing a report to the school board as they traditionally do. We welcome you all and look forward to working with you this year. It's truly an honor to get to work with you all. So I will now turn it over to our newest member of our board, Caroline Silveira, for her comments this evening.
Thank you so much. Can everybody hear me clearly? Okay, great. So my name is Caroline Silveira, like Chairman Latif mentioned before, and I'm a senior at City Hilton High School. I'd first like to start by thanking the board for having me here and also to issue congratulations to my fellow representatives, Ben and Ashley, for being appointed to this position as well as the student senators who are not with us tonight. I'm proud to not only represent my diverse community but also over 90,000 students in the county. I'm very excited for this position. I'd also like to mention that I am involved with the Prince William County Human Rights Student Leadership Council. So I wanted to issue them a congratulations on the award that they just won. They work really hard for us and it's a great organization. Besides that, when I applied to this position last year, I knew that I wanted to advocate for equitable learning. To me, it meant more bilingual administration, free SAT prep and tests, and also partnership with community-based organizations. But then COVID hit and I kind of had to change my plans around a little bit. But COVID also did highlight the importance of kind of fixing inequity in learning and really striving to make the county more equitable. I know that the students that will be most impacted by online learning probably aren't tuning into every school board meeting. So the senators and I have decided to really make, sorry, to really work hard towards closing these gaps and advocating for students this year. Additionally, the other representatives and I have been meeting virtually this entire summer to accommodate these changes and prepare for the upcoming school year. We actually had the opportunity about two weeks ago to meet with Senator Mark Warner. And we were able to talk to him about the effects of COVID on Prince William County students and also how students are planning to navigate online, online learning this school year. It was a great opportunity to advocate for students at the federal level, and we hope that we'll have more opportunities like this. Finally, we were able to meet with the student senators virtually as well and discuss our upcoming goals for this school year. The student senate, if you don't know, is made up of 13 senators from each of the high schools and the three student representatives to the school board. Most senators were very interested in equitable learning, so I'm excited about that. And we will meet next week to finalize our group goals and committees for this year. We recognize that our goals and committees will also be surrounded and kind of about technology, online learning, and equity. Contacting your school senator is the most efficient way to voice any ideas or concerns on the countywide level. Finally, to any students that may be watching, I want to emphasize that my role as a student representative is not to voice my own concerns, it's to voice your concerns. Please reach out to myself in the senate this year. We really do want your feedback, especially on online learning. I want to hear about how everything went, the good, the bad, the in-between. We do have a website, pwcsstudentsenate.com, that has updates on our work and all of the contact information, including mine. And then finally, shameless plug, to check out our Twitters. Mine is at CarolinePwCS. And then our senate one is at PWCSStudentSenate. We will be posting live updates as well. We look forward to hearing from you and thank you to the board for listening to me tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Silveira. We really appreciate your comments this evening. Next, we'll move on to 1901, Superintendent's time, Dr. Stephen Walts.
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. It's hard to believe that school begins Tuesday for the 2021 school year. I recognize how difficult this pandemic has been on our students and their families, our staff members, and obviously, the community as a whole. Some of us have lost loved ones or friends to COVID-19, and others have experienced the symptoms to varying degrees. Our patience has been tested over and over again as we have limited our travel and stayed inside our homes. I have also heard many inspiring stories from our community of people supporting one another. We must continue to work collaboratively to support one another and lift each other up. And I want to give a shout out for all those community members that can't stay in their homes because they're required to go out and work. And we have a lot of not only parents, but students in that position. The school division has remained busy since the closure on March thirteenth, serving more than one million meals to students in need. I want to thank the hundreds of teachers, administrators, and support staff for lending their skills, their opinions, and their help in preparing for this school year through serving on the task forces and on many, many groups creating the instructional lessons, both virtual and in person. I also would like to thank the teachers who participated in our collaborative town hall meetings. Additionally, we educated five thousand eight hundred students virtually through our summer school program. In an effort to prevent the spread of the virus, our facilities and custodial staff have been working diligently to thoroughly clean our buildings and ensuring our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units are appropriately circulating air. Our health staff has worked closely with the Prince William Health District to develop a plan prioritizing the physical and social emotional needs of our students and staff, ensuring safety and belonging as a foundation for learning. The most recent update we have received from the Prince William Health District is that there are no significant changes to COVID-19 in our local area, and we continue to be in the moderate range. The P P E has been delivered to all schools for nurses, special education staff, and other employees, and mobile hand sanitizer stations are being installed at all schools along with clear plastic barriers in areas where the public interacts with employees. Human resources, our level associates, and school administrators have been working with employees to ensure their roles and expectations for in-person or virtual teaching are clear. This includes elementary librarians and counselors who have been provided clarifying guidance on reporting as needed. On Tuesday, I personally thanked all the people I saw who were at the Kelly Leadership Center in mid-afternoon for assisting with the fittings for the N ninety-five masks. The operation was both efficient and impressive. I have also spoken with each and every one of our one hundred principals over Zoom to hear directly from them how their plans for the opening of school are progressing. I also talked to each one of our eighteen directors. I gave each person an opportunity to talk about things that are working well and that they're very pleased with and any concerns that they might have to me directly. I can assure everyone that our schools are all working incredibly hard to serve our students and our families, whether in person or virtually. I have seen the great work they are doing to conduct drive-throughs where families get their books, art supplies, materials, and technology, and a chance to wave at their teachers, administrators, and support staff. Schools are conducting virtual meet your teacher and return to learn nights and town halls. My wife is on a call right now, a big group at my daughter's high school, hearing the principal, welcome back. It is an enormous team effort, and I could not be prouder of the positive attitude of our teachers, administrators, and support staff to make the best out of these challenging times. Here are some additional key things you need to know for the start of school. September eighth is the first day of school for all students. Most students are virtual only unless your student's school has specifically talked to you about your student attending in person. Students attending in person have been determined based on instructional need, and as of today, we will have one thousand two hundred six students attending in person on the first day. Our teachers of students with special needs have been scheduling individualized education program meetings and planned meetings with parents and guardians and working diligently to meet the needs of their students. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of all of our staff members to draft or finalize, as of today, more than ten thousand six hundred seventy-seven I E Ps. Canvas will be the primary platform for delivery of online instruction. Details about Canvas for parents, including instructional videos, are available on the P W C S website, and instructions are available in multiple languages. Our teachers and other instructional staff have been developing lessons through Canvas, which is a common learning management system. They have been engaged in multiple training opportunities to deliver the best possible instruction to our students. One thousand five hundred parents participated just yesterday in a Canvas parent pointer session in collaboration with our English learner programs and services, student learning, and instructional technology staff. On Saturday, I sent a message to all special education teachers and related service providers to clarify the expectations of their use of Canvas. I recognize the dual priorities of I E Ps and first-day readiness in a near-term heavy burden for these employees. I greatly appreciate the enormous amount of time and energy it is taking to be ready as possible for the first day of school. I also understand there are all dedicated professionals who want to deliver a world-class education for every child every day. The most critical thing for special education teachers providing in-person instruction is to be focused on the students in front of them while they are in school. Canvas needs can be met over the next few weeks, and additional support and training will continue to be made available. Additionally, the P W C S Canvas Commons now contains both K twelve Virtual Virginia and P W C S courses, offering special educators and English for speakers of other language specialists, also known as E S A R E L, access to a combined total of over two hundred thirty courses for their use. The entire courses or grade levels can be downloaded into a teacher's course. Or teachers may wish to pick and choose individual assignments to best meet the needs of their students. Teachers needing assistance with using the P W C S Commons in Canvas should contact the instructional technology coach at their school, who will be ready to assist them. Zoom will be the primary platform for live instruction. Details on using Zoom are available on our P W C S website. To help prepare our students for virtual learning, P W C S is distributing more than forty-four thousand technology devices to families. Due to national supply chain challenges, some families at the elementary school level may be asked to share a device among multiple students as soon.
Jason, is everybody out? I guess Jason's out, too. All right, well, while we're, I guess we're not live on TV either? Or is our cable still, is it? Okay, let's assume cable TV is still, is Lucky, is cable TV still working? Okay. Okay, so we're still on, at least people can access us through the cable TV network. When we get back on, we'll complete Dr. Walts's report, but we'll move on. For now, we will go to, where's Carol's? Carol, Carol? Carol, any objection to us going to the ombudsman report? I mean, I know administration, Dr. Walts is not on, but. I think, I don't think he'll object. I mean, we we covered much of it anyways earlier. Yeah, I mean, if they have any questions. Ms. Sarah Espinosa will bring her up for twenty oh one, which is the annual report of the ombudsman. If our administration has questions, when they return, we'll we'll bring you back up, Sarah. Oh, I guess, can they can they respond, though? No. Okay, I think Lucky's telling me they can still hear us at home, so we will. So we'll continue on for now, and then when they return and they have the ability to talk, if they need to have any questions answered, we'll certainly bring them back. Ms. Sarah Espinosa, I'd like to introduce as well, she is our ombudsman, who was hired last year, and she's giving her first of her annual reports for the fiscal year 2020. Ms. Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, Dr. Walts, and members of the school board. Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to present the P W C S Office of the Ombudsman's first annual report. As you know, the Office of the Ombudsman was established by the school board as a resource for employees, parents, students, and members of the community to voluntarily seek confidential assistance in resolving division-related concerns, conflicts, and issues. Per Policy one eighty, the Office of the Ombudsman operates in accordance with the International Ombudsman Association's Code of Ethics and Core Values of confidentiality, impartiality, informality, and independence. The Office of the Ombudsman, which is staffed by myself and Rosa Maria Manzinas, has two primary responsibilities. First, we assist individuals seeking assistance in resolving division-related concerns by listening, identifying, and analyzing options, and where applicable, facilitating informal discussions and resolutions. Second, and of equal importance, we collect data and identify trends and patterns while safeguarding the anonymity of those seeking assistance and utilize this data to make quarterly and annual reports. The purpose of these reports is to promote organizational wellness by alerting the school board and superintendent to issues that merit further examination in the hope these observations will help the division identify and remove obstacles in achieving the division's mission. Next slide. Between August fifth, two thousand nineteen, and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the Office of the Ombudsman assisted one hundred and fifty-eight visitors. That's what we call the individuals who come to see us. Seventy percent of those visitors were division employees.
Do you know where I went out?
Dr. Walts, we can hear you. If you just mute, I I understand most everyone is back. Excuse me, Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Jason, is, are our members back?
Yes, Chairman Latif, we were here the whole time.
Oh, got it.
There was a disconnect between us and the boardroom. So yeah, we're we're all here and and we were all looking at each other, but yeah, we're ready.
So, Dr. Walts, if you if you don't mind what we're gonna do, since we brought Sarah up, we'll just have her complete her report and then have you finish up. Is that okay?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay, just, thank you.
Thank you. So seventy percent of the visitors during this time period were division employees. That equates to about one percent of the employee population. Of those visitor employees, fifty-three percent of the visitor employees were teachers, thirty-two percent were classified staff, and fifteen percent were administrators. When visitors meet with me and express concerns, I categorize them in accordance with the International Ombudsman Association's Uniform Reporting Categories. Many of the visitors come to discuss more than one concern. Next slide. Thank you. Sixty-one percent of the employee visitors expressed concerns in regard to the supervisory relationship. So the relationship between a supervisor and a supervising. Thirty-two percent of employee visitors expressed concerns that fell into the category of legal, regulatory, financial, and compliance. And then you can see the other categories of concerns that visitors expressed as well. I should note that it's not unusual in organizations for the majority of employee concerns to be related to supervisory relationships. Next slide. In addition to the categories, the IOA also has subcategories. And so I've categorized the employee visitor concerns in subcategories as well. For the evaluative or supervisory relationship concerns, there were two most frequent subcategories. The first was respect and treatment, and that's defined by the IOA as demonstrations of inappropriate regard for people, not listening, rudeness. The second was retaliation or fear of retaliation, punitive behaviors for previous actions or comments. Again, this is with the employee visitors expressing concerns. As I said, thirty-two percent of the employee visitors also expressed concerns that fell into the category of legal, regulatory, financial, and compliance. And here, the most frequent subcategory of concern was discrimination or different treatment compared with others or exclusion from some benefit on the basis of a protected category. More specifically, the majority of those issues and those expressing concerns had to do with the protected category of race. Next slide. In regard to the parent or community and student visitors, seventy-nine percent expressed concerns related to services and administrative issues. The most frequent associated subcategory, and that is questions, concerns, or issues or inquiries about services or administrative offices. And the most frequent subcategories within that category had to do with behavior of service providers, responsiveness and timeliness, and retaliation or fear of retaliation for expressing concerns. Next slide. Additionally, of those parent, community, and student visitors, thirty percent expressed concerns related to the teacher-student relationships, and thirty percent expressed concerns that fell into the legal, regulatory, financial, and compliance category. Again, the most frequent subcategory in regard to the legal, regulatory, financial, and compliance category had to do with discrimination or different treatment compared with others or exclusion from some benefit on the category of a protected, on the basis of a protected category. Next slide. Per Policy one eighty, it is the ombudsman's responsibility to also make recommendations to promote positive improvement. And here, I think it's important to note that ombudsman generally, by virtue of the nature of the services they provide, have an unusual vantage point from which to view the organizations they serve. By design, ombud's programs are impartial, confidential, and serve a small percentage of the employee and constituent population as visitors. So these observations are not meant to diagnose the organization. The ombud's observations are most appropriately used to alert the organization to issues in need of further examination. And so here are my observations. In meeting with visitors during the first year, I heard and identified a theme related to workplace climate and culture. More specifically, a number of employee visitors assigned to various schools and offices expressed concerns over the manner in which they were treated by their supervisors, as well as fears that they would be retaliated against if they were to raise specific concerns specific to their school or office or involving leadership. While it is understood these observations were limited in regard to the number of visitors as a percentage of the total employee population, the consistent nature of the concerns expressed amongst the visitors appears to merit further exploration. It is not within the purview of the Office of the Ombudsman to conduct investigations. So again, I am reporting about what I'm hearing in my office. Based on these observations and the data shared in the annual report, the recommendation is that you consider a comprehensive, independent study to be conducted to assess workplace climate and employee engagement, including examining employee experiences specific to equity and inclusion. Such a study and the subsequent findings may be useful in identifying what, if any, specific actions may be advisable to promote continued organizational wellness. And I realize that the pandemic adds a complexity to your consideration of this recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity to present the first annual report and for the privilege of serving as the P W C S ombudsman. Happy, I'm happy to answer any question. Next slide.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you so much for your report. I really, my favorite thing about you is how inclusive you are and the, and not inclusive, completely, like, it's, you've got everything in there. I did have a question about you in one of your categories, it's like legal, regulatory, financial, and you said the the big part was hitting on, what was, trying to think what I. Like, claims of racism, was that it, or?
So, so the largest subcategory within that category had to do with discrimination.
Discrimination, I'm sorry, I didn't, well, it could be, couldn't it?
No, yeah, and so of the of the people expressing concern that they were being treated differently, the major protected category they were expressing concern about was race.
It, do you have like a percentage of like how much of that? Or can you not speak to that?
So I saw about one percent of the employee population at Prince William County, which was about one hundred and eleven employees, and thirty-two percent expressed concern related to legal, regulatory, financial, and compliance. So that's, not all of them specifically were talking about discrimination. There are a couple other categories in there as well.
Okay, that, no, thank you.
Jason, can I see the folks at home, if possible? If not, does anybody, Ms. Jessie?
Hi, I want to thank you for the report. When you were looking at equity and concerns about the pandemic, did you see an increase during this period of time? Were, are were those concerns about equity and items prior to? Was that an uptick during the pandemic? That's my question.
No, actually, it was throughout the entire year.
Okay, and when you look at your recommendation, would you review that a little bit and give me more detail on that?
Certainly. So what I'm recommending is that you consider undertaking a comprehensive, independent study to be conducted by outside experts to assess workplace climate and employee engagement, and specifically included within that to look at the employee experience as it relates to equity and inclusion. When you bring in an outside expert, they may go about this in a variety of ways. But one way people generally start is with an employee engagement or a diversity climate survey.
I know that Loudon County and Fairfax County provided a report to the school board in conjunction with the NAACP about discrimination. Is this what you're considering, or is, would that be a separate item of consideration? Or does that align with what you're recommending?
That is even more expansive than what I'm recommending. So I think that those, the Loudon and Fairfax reports had to do with not only the employee experience, but the student experience.
Okay, because they looked at schools in terms of employment. of employment, discrimination, where there are discrimination in terms of their access to positions or movement up in the, in the organization.
Those were some of the concerns expressed. Had to do with, had to do with promotional opportunities.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, you do an excellent job, and you're such a common voice, but I, I'm very impressed with the work that you've done, and the fact that all these people come to you says that this position, I know that Lori and I were both, and along with other members of the board, but I think that this is a position, it's proven that this is a position that was really needed, and you're the right person for the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Williams has her hand up.
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Espinosa, for all of your work in the position. It's been an interesting year for all of us, but I'm sure especially for you, for your first year out the box, and then welcome to pandemic. I appreciate your report and the thoroughness of the information received from the board, and I think you exemplify what it means to have an ombudsman in a school system. I'm very appreciative of your service, as I'm sure our school division is as well. And then I would just like to, you know, ask the board to seriously consider Mrs. Espinosa's recommendation when it comes time for us to take an action item up and maybe even go broader, as some of our surrounding counties are doing with, with that recommendation. But I think that's a good thing for all of us to chew on in the interim. So thank you again, Ms. Espinosa, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espinosa, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Walts, we'll go back to you to finish your report.
Thank you so much, Chairman Latif, members of the board. By the way, we, we had a equipment failure, and sometimes that happens, and I'm just thrilled that our great team has got us back up and running. So thank you, our great technology team. And I'll pick up where I left off. To help prepare our students for virtual learning, PWCS is distributing more than forty-four thousand technology devices to families. Due to national supply chain challenges, some families at the elementary school level may be asked to share a device among multiple students. As soon as we receive additional devices already on order, we will provide these families, one for each student. Canvas and Zoom apps can be used on a smartphone or a tablet if preferred, or if a laptop is not available. The Division is also sponsoring the cost of Comcast Cares for qualifying families in need of internet service. Qualifying families are being contacted. For those in rural areas of the county without the ability to connect to broadband but who have cellular access, schools have limited numbers of take-home hotspots available. Wi-Fi has been made available in thirty-six parking lot locations across the county, and a list is available on our PWCS website. Parents and guardians needing technology support should contact their student school for additional help. Student schedules for elementary school are available in ParentView Now, and all other schools will be released on September 4th, along with courses being published at Levels in Canvas on that same day. We encourage families to test your technology before the first day of school to help work out any issues. Answers to Common Technology Support questions are available from your school or by visiting Be sure to look for communication from your student or student schools or schools for further details on the school year, including schedules and bell times. Be sure to check the SCOOP email each week and visit the PWCS website for the most up-to-date information on our Return to Learn frequently asked questions. The U.S. Department of Agriculture extended through December 31st the waivers that allow us to continue serving free meals, including breakfast and lunch, to all students. This doesn't change our operation extensively, but does allow more PWCS students to be served without having to pre-qualify for free or reduced status or pay. In addition to breakfast and lunch, we have fifty-six schools where families can also receive dinners and snacks for up to seven days a week on Mondays and Thursdays. A special Return to Learn packet has been activated in online registration in ParentView. This special online packet replaces many of the forms traditionally signed in person the first week of school, including items such as the emergency contact information. Also for security, all PWCS Zoom and Canvas student accounts are locked from allowing students to change their names. However, if a student has a preferred first name, parents and guardians can update it at any time, the preferred name in ParentView, either in the app or the web browser. If they don't have a preferred name, no action is required. I appreciate your patience and support as we work through this difficult time. I am confident, working collaboratively, we can make the 2021 school year a fantastic year. Now I would like to conclude my remarks this evening with a video that will help showcase what our virtual school will look like. Run video, please.
The School Division has been working hard to prepare for this school year. Covington Harbor Elementary School offered an inside look at their virtual learning plan.
To prepare for the upcoming school year, our PLC team has been working collaboratively, day in, day out, to come up with strategies and review the modules that the Office of Student Learning has provided for us so that we can meet the needs of all the learners.
I work closely with the math department, as I'm a math teacher. They have given us pacing guides throughout the past few years. This year is no different. They have provided us with a pacing guide that is virtual. Now it's on Canvas. We all can see it, we all can manipulate it to our liking and to make sure that our student needs them.
I'm really excited about the Canvas platform because students do not need to leave Canvas at all. We can do live lessons virtually. When you and your child log in to the Canvas platform, our school team, our ITC, has helped us prepare a landing page for the student. So they will be able to log in through their Clever and 365 accounts, click on the Canvas app, and it will take them right to the learning page that they need to begin with for the day.
A typical day for a student could look like waking up, getting a nice breakfast, stretching, and then looking at their day's task. They will have different Zoom sessions throughout the day, for math, ELA, sometime science, and maybe Virginia Studies. So they should be prepared for that. With our breakout sessions in Zoom, we are able to pull in the ESOL teacher, pull in the Special Education teacher, the gifted teacher, and allow them to run that breakout session from our main session.
On my fifth grade team, there are four teachers, and we will strategically have the schedule. Each of the four teachers will teach the same lesson.
So that will give you four sessions at the same lesson. Plus, we have two small group lessons and kind of individual off-hours. So that's providing six different opportunities for the students to learn the same day's material.
The recorded version, we can always revisit later in case we have to help them better understand what they, what they were missing or what they needed to do.
You know, in the regular music room, we have instruments and recorders and xylophones and drums and all those things, but virtually that's going to be different. However, we have been finding virtual instruments, virtual xylophones, a virtual drum set. So we found lots of different ways to still make music virtually. We have our voice as a main instrument as well that we'll be using.
I'm sure you've heard of synchronous and asynchronous. The asynchronous part is that Monday, the teachers will be meeting, collaborating all day, making sure that our lessons are on point, but the student will be able to have this leadership opportunity to say, I have to get my work done. We're giving them materials, we're giving them assignments on the day off, but they are going to be working.
Take it one day at a time, and you know, encourage your student to have a set routine each day.
Whatever supplies that you need to have, it's great to have them out ready to go, so you don't have to go find them in your house when it's class time.
It's important for the student to have a consistent workspace, free from noise, it doesn't have a busy background, and our biggest tip would be is you know to fire up those laptops ten minutes before your lesson, use the restroom, have a snack, and be prepared, ready to go for your teacher. Kids are resilient, and kids are going to pick up on the tone that we set for them, and I think if we have a positive tone, they're going to feed off that. And if we teach them early on that there's going to be mistakes in this process, and we set them up as learning opportunities, we will all see a better outcome at the end.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. That was an excellent video. I think the board all enjoyed watching that. Thank you for putting that together. Next, we'll go to twenty-point-zero-two, revision of Policy 891, renovation, modernization of facilities. Dr. Walts, Sal Chiroki.
Good evening again, Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. The Office of Facility Services is proposing the revision of Policy 891, which is primarily just bringing our policy within the alignment with our existing practice as it relates to the modernization of our buildings. Good night.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chiroki.
Thank you.
We will now move to twenty-point-zero-three, the appointment of the clerk of the school board. And so I guess what I should say is, I was a bit premature, because this will make it official. We have a recommended action, and I'm going to ask Ms. Lori Williams to make the motion.
Feel like student representative appointment time, this is so exciting. So I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint a clerk to replace Ms. Deborah Urban, and that clerk would be Ms. B. Simpson.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a number of seconds. Ms. Zargarpur's second, Ms. Jessie's second. Let's open the floor for discussion.
Congratulations, Ms. B. Simpson.
We got to vote first.
Oh, no, it was discussion, we're discussing.
Oh, yeah, oh, I see, okay.
That's my discussion.
Oh, okay. Very good. And then, and who's next? Mr. Wilk?
I, B., you're phenomenal, and I don't think I have to say anything more publicly. It's, it's an honor to work with you for all these years, and I'm very excited that you'll be the clerk, the right person for the job.
Hi, B., this is Lily Jessie. You know, I've known you for a long time, I've watched you in, working in Human Resources, and now as this new position, I applaud your efforts, you're such a professional person. I am elated that you were selected for this position.
Wonderful. Ms. Williams?
I also would like to, the public to know, and it's definitely worth noting, that Ms. B. was our interim clerk of the school board and has single-handedly herded all of us like cats alone during this time of pandemic chaos, and has done everything the clerk and the deputy clerk would do for the past several months by herself, in coordination, I'm sure, with other staff members, but really taking on this tremendous task and doing it as flawlessly as could possibly be during a pandemic, and it is very much appreciative. I have not ever seen a staff member or person step up to that level in such a short period of time. Thank you very much, B. Appointment well deserved.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I just wanted to offer my congratulations as well. I've gotten to know you and your friendly face, I love seeing you in real life, but you do so much work behind the scenes, and I'm so grateful that you are in this position. And again, congratulations.
Ms. Jackson?
I also want to extend my congratulations and sincere gratitude for emailing me and keeping me updated and answering all my questions. I'm excited, and congratulations.
Ms. Wall?
I want to also add my congratulations. It's been a pleasure to work with you so far, my short time on the board, but I do really appreciate all of your efforts and the hard work that you do, how prompt you are with requests and answers to questions and keeping us on calendars organized and all those other things. Thank you very much, and we look forward, I look forward to many great experiences on the board with you as our board clerk.
At this point, I would echo all the statements by the prior board members, and I'd ask the board to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
I'm happy to say the vote is seven yes unanimous.
Excellent. We have a vote, seven yes for our new clerk, B. Simpson. Congratulations, Ms. Simpson, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. We're going to move on to twenty-point-zero-four. We have, from Ms. Zargarpur and Ms. Wall, Safe Schools Advisory Council appointments for Coles and Gainesville District. A motion's in order. Ms. Wall, when you want to make the motion, and then, that'll be twenty-point-zero-four. Or, or, you know.
Yes, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Jaclyn Gaston to represent Ms. Lisa Zargarpur of the Coles District, and Chrissy Marie Falls to represent Ms. Jennifer Wall of the Gainesville District on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for a two-year term.
Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpur's seconds. We'll open the floor for discussion. Any comments from, Ms. Wall?
I'm excited to appoint or nominate Ms. Chrissy Marie Falls to the position. She's been a strong advocate for child health and safety in our community for a long time. She works with a number of coalitions already in the community. I think she'll be, bring a great collaborative approach to the board. I appreciate so much the resources and experience that she has, and I look forward to working with her on this, this board. So I'm very excited about it.
Excellent. Ms. Zargarpur?
Yes, Jackie Gaston is a parent of three children here in Prince William County, and her kids have gone through Yorkshire Elementary, Parkside Middle, Osborn Park High School. She's a very involved parent in the PTO, and on the SAC Committee, SAC Committee. She is also a teacher, she's a transition specialist for alternative programs in Fairfax County. So she's somebody who's got a lot of experience with all kinds of ages and stages and has been really involved and active in her own community, and I think this is a great opportunity for all of us to have Jackie on this, in this position. Thank you.
Excellent. Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
And the vote is seven yes unanimous, motion passed?
Motion passes, seven yes unanimous. We'll move on next to twenty-point-zero-five, Special Education Advisory Council appointment for the Gainesville District. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Deborah Tecampi to represent Ms. Jennifer Wall of the Gainesville District on the Special Education Advisory Council for a two-year term.
Do I have a second? I will second that. Discussion, Ms. Wall?
Yes, Ms. Tecampi comes to us as a teacher in Prince William County and a parent of a son with special needs who is in high school and has one child who is a graduate of Prince William County Schools and one who is currently in, in school. And I think with, she brings a wealth of experience and will be an asset to this committee because of her long experience with our schools, but also with the teacher perspective as well. So I think she has been an advocate already within the Gainesville District for her own children and others. She's, she's going to be a great asset to this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
The vote is seven yes unanimous, motion passed.
The motion passes unanimously. We will move on to board matters. So we have not had board matters in months, and, and this is the time where each board member will speak for approximately three minutes about whatever's on their mind. I don't, I mean, everything, return to learning, okay. Okay, to what's on the agenda, I guess. All right, we will start, we'll start with Justin Wilk today.
Gosh, it's been so long since this, and usually it's like a full-on report of like schools I visited, events that I went to.
One sec, Mr. Wilk, I'm sorry, I apologize. Carol, is there a restriction on what they, is, do they have to talk about only what's on the agenda, like return to learning issues, that kind of stuff? Okay. So just weave that in there somehow, Mr. Wilk.
Yeah. Any, but, so, yeah, I think that just goes to show the crazy times we're living in right now as we prepare for return to learning. And so, you know, the last couple of board meetings have been very interesting. I've received, of course, all the email correspondence in relation to a return to learning. I've tried responding to as many people as possible. I want to thank our central office staff, the number of meetings I've had. Last week alone, I met with Ms. Heebner, Dr. Roper, and learned actually how to write an IEP, so that was very educational. Just full transparency, I can see how it could take some time to write write these, and so, but, very intuitive system, and I was excited to learn about the program, the platform. So, that was a very good professional development session. Had a number of meetings with Mr. Wallingford and calls about the appropriate ordering of PPE and other such matters. And so, I just, I want to thank our division, Dr. Waltz, his entire team. Ms. Heebner has been phenomenal, working nonstop to help me better understand the reopening of schools. You know, I think every family is going to definitely feel this. These are unconventional times. We're still trying to figure out a schedule in my house between when my wife goes in the forest park to do virtual learning from her classroom, to when I get to go drive to a place here and do my job, part-time, to then when my son's babysitter comes to help him put him on a virtual classroom at Ashland Elementary Kindergarten, to when the ABA therapist comes into the house and helps my son, to when the second babysitter comes over to help. So, just giving examples that this is, this looks really weird. This is definitely going to impact everyone. I understand what everyone is going through, and, like I said, unconventional times. I want to thank all of our teachers, our special education teachers who are going into, for in-person learning on Tuesday. I want to thank all of our teachers who are even teaching virtually and worked on the Canvas pages. I want to thank Dr. Waltz and his team for listening to me and other board members, me being very vocal about helping delay the Canvas pages for our special education teachers that are doing in-person learning. So, I want to thank you. The administration has been very collaborative. Again, I definitely want to thank our administration. I want to wish our teachers the best for the reopening of schools, for a safe, sanitary, and secure reopening in our buildings. And I want to thank all the virtual teachers who will start, again, in unconventional times, do their best, will do their best, I know, because we have outstanding educators to reach all of our students in Prince William County. So, again, thank you to our administration. Thank you to our many teachers, and thank you for my colleagues on the board for all the great questions and the discussion over the last couple of weeks.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start out with just a brief analogy. About three years ago, I went to a cross-country event, running a high school cross-country event, and it was a really, really hot day and a very tough race. And because it was so hot, and the kids had been standing outside for a long time before the race, there were a lot of runners who were having a lot of distress because it was so hot and such a hard race. And I watched with other parents as a lot, you know, the first runners started to come in and cross the finish line, and there were some kids who had given their all, and it wasn't quite enough. And so, I watched a particular runner collapse about 50 yards before the, the closing of the race, and struggle and crawl, and get up and fall, and struggle and crawl, and get up and fall, and finally crawl across the finish line. Obviously, people were standing close by to receive her at the finish line, but in that race, you can't have anybody assist you across the line if you want to finish. And I feel like this is a good analogy for what we have experienced in our school district this summer. We are working hard to cross that finish line. It's not, it hasn't been easy, and that is, I know, the biggest understatement. But, we have struggled, and we have fallen, and we've gotten back up, and I think that's true for every, every person who has been working so hard on this effort. So, I just want to say, I echo Mr. Wilk's thanks for everybody, from every division, from every school, at every level, behind the scenes, who has been working so hard to make this happen. Will it be perfect? No. None of us are perfect. Life is not perfect. Life is not fair, but we will do our best. And despite the fear and anxiety that a lot of people are experiencing right now, this new time where we're all a little bit out of our comfort zones, new ways of doing things, pandemics hopefully only come once a century or fewer, or, or less frequently, if, if we could say. Motions are high. We acknowledge the feelings of our teachers. As a school board, I mean, we've, we've heard you, we listen. We're grateful for your dedication and your work. We know the finish line is in sight, but it's, it might be, you know, it's a struggle to get there. For anyone whose family's been affected by COVID, we give compassion to you. We pray for your speedy recovery. We, we know we're all in this together, and it's, it's pretty tough. I also, though, want to acknowledge the larger, larger context. We do have 92,000 students whom we are responsible to educate. The realities of long-term impact of this COVID pandemic are yet to be seen. There will be an impact on learning for distance, on educational gains of distance learning. The reality is, is that we will see a widening of the learning gap. It will probably get larger. Those with, with support will do pretty well. Those who need more support, hopefully, we'll help them as well, but they may experience greater setbacks. So, make no mistake, distance learning will widen the gap, but we'll do our very best to close it as soon as we can. This gap will be even more pronounced for our sped population, which is why we have prioritized those children to return back to school as much, as much as we can. Our mission is to not leave them behind. For our families, school is a critical part of their lives, and this is, six months or a year, or a year and a half in a child's life is a very, very long time. It doesn't seem like that to adults, but to children it is. So, we will put our best effort forward, even if done correctly. What is the impact of distance learning on education? We do not know, but we will do our best. What is the impact of distance learning on mental health? We do not know, but we will do our best. The impact of all of this on academic achievement? We do not know, but we will do our best, and I know everybody working together will make a difference for our children. Where are we now? We're a public school division. We exist to provide broad educational support to all students who enroll in our division. We are essential to the fabric of our community. We are essential to the lives of the children in our districts. We have a plan. We are following it. We will work very hard to meet everybody's needs. Are we perfect? No. We need grace. We need patience. We need to work together while still fulfilling all of our obligations. We can do this, and I feel great confidence in our teachers. I just want to say thank you one more time for everything that you have done for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. I do have one announcement. There was a town hall meeting regarding COVID, the COVID crisis and its impact on the teaching profession. The panel includes Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, the President of AFT, the President of the NAACP, and other notable civil rights and community leaders. The spokesman representing students nationwide was our very own Chloe Presley, Ambassador for Student Voice. She's an upcoming senior at Hilton High School, and she was the first person that Nancy Pelosi gave a shout-out to, saying how impressed she was with her. So, congratulations, Chloe, on a reopening plan. I have no doubt that everyone has spent countless hours in order to prepare for something we've never seen in our lifetime and hope to never see again. This includes the members of the superintendent's staff. I've worked at the school and central office level, and I know when things need to get done, we get it done, and we do whatever it takes. My observations are my own, and in no way diminish the efforts of our staff at central office or my colleagues on the board. I'm a senior member of this board, and I've seen, yes, and endured controversies and concerns from the community. During my seven-year tenure, I have never received such an outpouring of concern about the safety and well-being of students and, yes, staff at our schools. Teachers have had, always had complaints and requests, but they have never cried out to us for help and relief like they did recently. Earlier, when we talked about equity and culture, I think it's something that we really need to put on our radar. They have never felt that, they have, they have never felt that there was such a lack of equity and concern about their well-being. So, I'm talking about teachers. Special education teachers all highlight their, their dedication to learning of students, to parents, especially for special education parents. Do you not need to be, you do, you do not need to be concerned. They not only will teach your child, they love them. As one teacher wrote to me, and I tried to read everything that came, "We are ferociously protected of special education students." However, there's a difference in opinion, opinion in my mind about their readiness to open school September 8th, if required. I receive phrases such as, "They say we're okay at Central, but tell them we're not okay. Things are not in place. We are not ready." I am crying uncontrollably. And I have to tell you, I for one believe them, because they are afraid to speak out, and they have. And believing them, the board, we said we would use the word feasible. These teachers told us that it wasn't feasible. And in my opinion, in many instances, we did not listen to them. We didn't give them the two weeks that they needed. However, we need to move on. So, I feel that our responsibility now, that these people, that Dr. Waltz, I think you said, 10,000 IEPs, opening school is so, as a principal, you know, when I retired, I walked by your office and I left with this purple notebook, and I said, "Principals are overworked," and that was before the pandemic. I, I don't know what it's like to be a principal now, but it's just, the work is enormous. And so, now, our role is to monitor the progress as this roll out. It's to include, from the board. We need to monitor the number of students receiving programs at the schools. At one point, I thought there was a lack of equity with, to special ed, but then I found out people were saying there's a lack of equity, and they're concerned that some schools have absolutely no kids coming in. I don't know what that means. I asked about this afternoon for information on it, and I'm still asking you to give it to me, that information, because our responsibility as a board is to monitor and make sure these people are safe. We need to monitor outbreaks. I ask for that, in response to our school. I'm again asking for that information. If we're going to, these people are in a very difficult situation. We need to monitor that. We need to monitor and respond to teachers and individuals on the ground, instead of providing, I've been at Central, and it's so easy to say, well, at Central, we say they're doing fine. We need to listen to what these people are saying out, out in the fields. And lastly, to principals, I think you, you are a vulnerable group, because you're everywhere. If something happens to you, you're not going to know where it came from, because you're all over the building, and you're monitoring everything. But you have a responsibility to protect the children in your school, but you're also in charge of the staff, and you are required to report any endangerment of staff or children. Report and be an advocate for, for everything that's going on in your building. Let us know. I, I heard tonight when the ombudsman said that principals were, are intimidated. Most people think I'm not intimidated by anything, but I was intimidated. I didn't tell, if I was unhappy, I didn't call up to Central and say I'm unhappy all the time. I did the work, but you've got, in this situation, we're talking about life and death, you have to report, and our, our principals and our teachers need to let us know. I notice that you're not there tonight. You're not there tonight probably because you're trying to get ready for school, but I admire you. I admire all the work that has been done by Central, but the number one concern is equity and safety of our teachers, and I believe you when you say you are really tired, and principals, do whatever you can to help those teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jackson?
All right, thank you. I want to take a minute and thank all Prince William County staff for working tirelessly, including the administration, who have answered my many calls and emails. On a personal note, my boys and I stopped by their school yesterday to pick up their virtual learning supplies, and it was, it was very bittersweet. They were excited to see their school, meet their teacher, but were so sad when we drove away. I know staff feels the same way. I know as a parent, I am teaching my kids to extend grace and understanding to everyone, especially during this time, as we all adjust. I try to practice what I preach. I know there is a huge learning curve for everyone. Kindness goes a long way. I trust that everyone who works in this county is working extremely hard and has the kids' best interests at heart, and I thank them. The school district has asked us to email questions by close of business Friday, and we have asked them, including public meetings, to assess and give needed input. They are to keep us updated so we can act as a board if needed. I stress again, the importance of talking directly with teachers during this time. Their input is invaluable. I want to thank Senator Warner and other panelists, including our wonderful student representatives, for their time a few weeks ago. I was so proud to share a table with our wonderful student representatives who advocated strongly for the needs of our community during this time. Thank you to the many parents, teachers, and students who have met with me since March to talk about returning to loan and other needs. I've lost track of how many Zoom meetings, but I remember the new faces. And thank you for the numerous emails from teachers and parents and other community members. As we return to loan this month in September, we have to remember that this month is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. For the year of 2020, it is estimated that a little over 11,000 children under the age of 15 will be diagnosed with childhood cancer. This month, I plan to learn more about childhood cancer, and I encourage others to do the same, because during this time, you can feel alienated, and any way we can find to connect to people is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be your glasses-half-full person tonight. I am really excited about the start of the school year. It, to me, that is New Year's. It is always New Year's. I'm always excited about the new experiences, what we're going to be learning about, just the whole journey. And that's just me, right? But this is COVID, and this is really, really hard. Students, I know a lot of you are going to really miss those experiences that, especially if you're seniors. This is, this is a lot. And hopefully, we'll get to the springtime. Maybe things will be different, right? We're all going to wear our masks. We're going to practice washing our hands. We're going to practice our social distancing. We're going to stay home when we're sick. We're going to take care of ourselves and others. We have to do that. This is not normal. This, this whole year is absolutely insane. And when we're trying to get back to this school year, which I'm still excited for, it's going to look a little different. Online learning is a challenge. What we did in the spring is not what we're going to be doing this fall, and we're not going to have zero glitches. Let's be honest, we had one in our own board meeting tonight, right? So, it, it's going to happen, and we're going to give each other grace, and we're going to give each other space. And I want to make sure that parents also know that you're not responsible for educating your child. Just help them if they need it a little bit. Reach out to your teachers and stay in communication with those schools. It's really important. The other thing I believe in is the resiliency of our students. I know we were worried about what we're missing with COVID and, and what we may not be getting, but I also really honestly believe in your resiliency as people. This, this thing is going to be formative. It's going to change you in the future for the better. May not feel like it, right? But I'm old, so I, I know these things kind of work that way sometimes. To the staff here at the Kelly Center, I know I've asked a bazillion questions. I've had calls. I am so appreciative for the time you have taken. Behind the scenes, these are people who've been working six and seven days a week, putting in 12 to 16 hours a day. There are some people, I send an email, and I get one back, and I'm just messing around at midnight or something, and I still get one back right away, right, Ms. Heebner? Exactly. You're, you're working behind the scenes, and no one knows what it is that you're doing, but you're doing it, and I'm really appreciative. To the principals who have been working since, I don't know, you haven't stopped, right? It's been since March. You've been trying to figure out how to get your community, all the things that they need. You've been trying to make sure all the learning is taking place, the teaching, the teachers, the parents, the students, all those things. I know it's a lot. I, I am very worried about all of us getting burnt out on some level, but, but again, glass-half-full. This is an unprecedented time, and this is an opportunity to see what we can do in these virtual spaces. But principals, thank you for all the work that you've been doing, all the dots you connect, all the, the things that you're trying to do for your school communities. Teachers, I hear so much pain in some of these emails, so much anxiety, so much worry, and I know there's a small number of you who will be going into the buildings, and I'm worried about it, too. But, I also know that we've got the PPE for you. We have procedures in place, everything that we can do to keep you safe, including the air circulation with the HVAC systems, all of that. They have been working on this constantly. I, I think the buildings are going to be just fine. I also want you guys to know, teachers, some of you have expressed concern about you haven't you haven't gotten all the training on Canvas. But you know what you, you do have? You have that thing that makes you a teacher. You have that thing that relates with students and you're going to go in and you're going to smash it. Because you know what? This is what you do. This is your job. You're going to go in, you're going to build those relationships and you're going to meet those students where they are and you're going to figure it out. And it feels horrible because we're planners, right? But guess what? I know you got this. I know you're going to do this and I know you're going to do it really well. To the TAs and all the support staff, I know that you guys have been working, some of you have been working all summer long quietly, but you're there. And you just do what the job requires and I'm so grateful for that as well. Glasses half full, people. I really believe that. Oh, stop laughing, Dr. Latif. It really is. It really is.
The only glasses I'm worried about.
Mine are fogging right now. Please, wear your mask, wash your hands, practice the distancing, take care of yourself and others. And for goodness sake, stay home when you're sick. Stay well and, and good luck to this, this school year.
Ms. Lori Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start by echoing the same sentiments that my board members have expressed. And that is to thank the staff at every single level for every single thing that they have done. I cannot reiterate enough at the Kelly Building how on point they've been in response time and answering questions, how much grace that they have demonstrated in doing their jobs, how many times it's been okay to say, we just don't know yet, which is unprecedented in this division for so many, so many things. We just usually don't answer with that. And for our principals and for our teachers and for our TAs and everyone involved really in, in educating our Prince William County families, because we do so much more than just for our education, for our student. I really want to thank everyone for all of the hard work that they've put in. And I can't emphasize enough, we really do just need to extend a certain amount of grace. This is my first year on the board, just like everyone else's during a pandemic and hopefully the last ever. But we all know that the first week of school is chaotic. And it's okay to make a ton of mistakes and people to be frustrated and deal with power outages or equipment not working and things like that. We're dealing with those issues instead of students missing buses and the wrong bus came and I lost the kindergartner and they were in another class and someone brought home my other book bag and whatever, I mean, there's, I can't get in my locker, you name it. There are always issues with the first week of school and the beginning of school and nothing is ever perfect. And while our expectations are high, I think that's because we all care. We don't talk about it that much, but that's really where that comes from. Everyone wants their child to receive the best education. Our staff members want to provide the best education. Our bus drivers and cafeteria workers and everyone else want to provide the best service, quality of service they possibly can. And I think it's okay for everyone to take a deep breath and, and be okay with it's not going to be perfect. It just isn't. And, and that's okay. We're going to have trying times. I know myself, I think my kids could probably tell you that if I yelled one more time, they may just move out and live on the roof themselves. And, and that's because we're all under a tremendous amount of stress. Every single one of us are kids too. But as Ms. Dargapour just said, I think that the glass is half full in the sense that I have learned so much from our students, my own children, the student reps, all of the many students who tuned in on Zoom calls about mental health and online resources and Canvas. I, I can't thank you all enough for giving me the hope in our future and especially for updating my sorely old person technological skills and being patient. I think that you have, as youth, really demonstrated what we all know and that is that you will continue to lead the way. And I am eternally grateful for your putting up with all of us non-technologically compliant parents and non-knowledgeable parents. I think this is an opportunity once again to shine and highlight how awesome you truly are. I'd like to thank the student representatives for their conversation with Senator Warner when he came to Unity Read. I think it was last Friday. I have warped since the pandemic time. But when you talk about the quality of education Prince William County Schools delivers and the way that we will continue to educate our students, you demonstrated that beautifully. And I know that you will continue to do that. And it makes me again, proud to be a Prince William County School Board member. I just want to follow up with a few things. Just some questions that I think need to be asked publicly and I, and I know the division will continue as they have been to answer these questions to our staff and to the members of the public. But I think it's important that I continue to stay the course. And that is, I'm just looking for some further clarity for myself as a parent, the expectation and for our teachers on how to deal with bias issues as we transform our education from in-person in buildings to in each other's homes. I think it's always important to highlight that the free and reduced lunch applications, while we have received the USDA waiver, are still very, very critically that they are completed and filled out. And if you don't have internet service or the ability to fill it out online, please let your school know if they aren't providing you that paper form. That is so important. It impacts our budgets and how, what, whether a school receives designation as a Title I school. It, it's just super hugely important that that form gets completed for so many reasons, but I'm board member thinking of budgetary reasons. Next is as we progress, if we could get further updates on school budgets and the schools that have to provide Wi-Fi hotspots and if we are going to be able to reimburse the schools. I'm going to continue to ask that question with the hope that we will eventually be able to answer it because I know that we don't have that answer right now and that's okay. I also wanted to, to see if we could get an update as time goes on on if we are able to provide extra assistance to our Title I schools. Because those are the schools that have traditionally the greatest needs and it's even more exacerbated during a pandemic. And it's really important that we acknowledge or we, and talk about that. I'd like to remind parents that September 30th is always, even though a pandemic, is our drop dead date for enrollment numbers and enrollment affects our budgets. So it's really important. Maybe you get week one and you decide homeschooling is not for you. Please enroll your kid as soon as possible. I know we don't talk about that, but this is the year to talk about it because it makes a difference for the rest of the calendar year. So the pandemic may end in December, but we only have the same amount of funds after that September 30 deadline for the remainder of the academic year. Just so I can say it again, the enrollment numbers that we get on September 30th affects our budget for the remainder of the academic calendar year, whether we have more students or less students. That's public education funding. And lastly, well, not lastly, but next, I just want an update on mental health services that we're providing for our students and our teachers. If we could talk about that a little bit more at our next meeting. I think it's important to just continuously have that conversation. This is a pandemic and it's stressful for all of us. And then I also want to let the public know that behind the scenes, all of us have been training. So it's the Kelly staff, it's our teachers, it's board members. I know myself, Ms. Dargapour, Ms. Wall, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jessie. All of us have been taking trainings so that we can continue to educate ourselves on the current state of school affairs, what it means to operate school systems in a pandemic and how we can best serve you as public officials. I am hopeful and excited about our virtual school start opening. I know that it will be successful because if you make up your mind for it to be and allow for the fact that we are human, we can be successful because you can only learn through failure. And that is part of the learning process. That's what we teach our kids. And as parents, well, not only, but that is part of the learning process. And as parents or guardians and adults, I think it's best if we set that example for our students to follow and give them grace when things don't work out or they get frustrated and give ourselves grace. And then lastly, I just want to say to my Prince William County families, my, my Black, African, African-American, Indigenous and persons of color family, people of color families, that I recognize as a member of that community that this is an extraordinarily hard time when it comes to our mental health. That has been the experience in my household and so many households that are like mine. And I just want to especially say to all of you, it's okay. It's okay to have bad days. It's okay to have good days and it's okay to break down. We have services to help you during these times and please utilize them. Talk to your kids, reach out to your counselors, reach out to other people in your community that are there to support you. It's, it's really hard right now to be a member of those communities, but we do have help and there are allies out there. And please take advantage of them because the start of the school year is another layer of stress that we undertake in our daily lives. And I think it's worth saying a thousand times, take advantage of the mental health resources that are available. Our schools have been doing a very good job, at least I know mine as, as a parent, of communicating that. And I want to thank all of the schools for reaching out to families to let them know and our school division, especially Dr. Waltz, for reiterating that and making that information publicly and widely available. I can't say you how much I appreciate that. So I am looking forward to a successful school year and I will do my annual embarrassing of my youngest child and say that he is looking forward to a successful school year because he does not have to wear pants yet. So with that, I will close. And good luck, everyone, on September 8th.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I will wrap up by, you know, echoing many of the statements that our board members have made and obviously the challenges we have this year. I, I know many of you who've been watching the meeting are wondering why we're not talking about the pandemic the whole time. But it's a $1.6 billion operation, 12,000 employees, 91,000 students. And there are a lot of other things we have to get done. And as board members, we have the responsibility to manage the fiscal aspects of this division. I want to congratulate Dr. Waltz on, on this energy initiative this evening, his team, Al Chiroki, Brian Gorman, announcing work towards the first net zero school in, in 2022, 23. Power purchase agreements, electrifying the buses. I want to congratulate and thank Dominion Energy for working with school divisions across the state, for working towards electrifying bus fleets and providing subsidies to do so. These efforts will result in long-term savings for the school division. This work is for financial savings and, and at the same time, it's good for the environment and it makes a lot of sense. Along those lines of financial savings, I want to thank Dr. Waltz, Mr. Wallingford again, on the bond sale that we announced tonight. I know this is one of the boring parts of the meeting. But last year, we had record interest rates on our sales. They lead to millions of dollars in savings. This year, they reduced the need for borrowing by $6 million by, by fiscally performing outstanding work, working with our vendors, getting better bids. And all of that makes a real difference when it comes time to, you know, building, buildings and those kinds of things. Those savings matter and I want to congratulate the staff and thank them for doing that. I want to thank the Board of County Supervisors for giving us $5 million this summer for buying more computers for our students. The Board of County Supervisors are poised to, they received another $41 million in CARES monies. They will be discussing dispersing some of that money to the school divisions. The board members here have been in constant communication with B O C S members. I speak regularly with Madam Chair Wheeler and, and other members about where we need to go and, and our constant needs. So there's been an open line of communications there. Again, as it is our fiscal responsibility to make sure we do everything we can to get the school division more money to do the things we need to do. I want to thank our new student member, Caroline Silveira, for her comments this evening. I can tell you that the board shares your priorities of SAT prep, free SAT prep, equity in the school division and bilingual administration. Those are very important priorities that the school board does share. I want to thank everyone again for their hard work. Ms. Heebner, who's here in, in person and all of our staff working from home here, those who came in for closed session. Thank you for everything you do. This year, as the board members pointed out, will be challenging. You know, will Canvas go down? Yes, it will go down. Will Zoom go down? Yes, it will go down. Will there be confusion about getting online in classes? And where's the teacher? Where's the student? Yes, there will be. We've had 150 years of public education in person in America. We have yet to achieve what I think we all want to achieve and that's 100% graduation, it's absolute literacy and it's, it is no opportunity gap and no achievement gap. We have yet to do that in 150 years of the greatest democracy on planet Earth. So to do what we want to do in the next two months, with two months of, you know, planning and effort to do online education and expect to perform at levels of in-person is going to be challenging. So as the board members pointed out earlier, you know, patience is going to be critical and together we can only get this done. And together, I mean, parent and teacher, student and teacher, parent and child, administration and teacher, teacher, administration, administration and everyone. All of us working together will get this done. We will not all agree. None of us agree. My wife and I don't agree on everything, but we do move forward together. And that's the only way we're going to accomplish this. As you saw tonight and everyone's going to probably post on some social media that, oh, look, the board went down in their meeting. Well, that's what happens in technology. As a physician, my telehealth visits go down. My electronic medical records go down quite regularly. When you depend on technology, you should expect these kinds of things. And so this will not be easy. So I, you know, echo the sentiments of my board members. I want to congratulate the school division, Dr. Waltz, for the Wi-Fi capabilities that they're laying out there, our work with Comcast. I want to thank Comcast for providing free access to online through a program people can apply to. You can go to our website. There are many pieces of information on our FAQ pages. There's videos and there's going to be continually updates. Dr. Waltz likes to point out that we are constantly working on continuous improvement. We are constantly working on continuous improvement. This administration has done this every day. Will it be perfect? Will it be easy? No. And it's our teachers included. They are working really hard. This is not easy to roll out these modules, as, as again pointed out, but we can only do this together. My wife and I have a 12th grader, a 10th grader, an 8th grader and a 4th grader. Some of them in transition years, some of them in very important years, some of them in years that are socially so critical, maybe more than other years. Are we worried? Yes. Are we scared? Yes. Do I have the same fears as all of you out there? Absolutely. Am I afraid they're going to miss out on things? Yes. Will they miss out on things? Yes. But it is our job as parents and students and teachers to work together. I will let you know that, you know, my kids have sort of vowed that they would never like to see this happen again in this country. And it is our students who will make sure this doesn't happen again, that we are never caught this far behind, this far down, this be in a position where 180,000 Americans have just lost their lives. It is our students who've led during some of the pandemic, as Dr. Waltz and the administration pointed out, with news stories throughout the summer and the pandemic, with kids making, you know, PPE, donating computers, refurbishing computers. I mean, it's outstanding work. As Ms. Jessie pointed out, one of our students spoke as, as one of the leads in a conversation with Nancy Pelosi. Our students are out there leading the way. I'm very proud of that effort. I think Prince William County Schools does provide a world-class education. They provide world-class leadership opportunities and I think they will continue to do so. I want to thank the board members for meeting with Senator Warner and advocating on behalf of our school division and also Dr. Waltz, meeting with Senator Warner. Thank you all. I want to finish and wrap up the meeting with just a best of luck to everyone on September 8th.